All right, I'm told we are live and we're going to call the meeting to order since it is 6:00. Item number two on the agenda is citizen public comments. We have one person in the audience and then I don't know if you've signed up to speak. She's shaking her head no. So we'll move on to item three. Consider approval of minutes from the February 23 regular meeting. I was not there, so I'm going to abstain on this vote.
I make a motion that they be approved?
Seconded.
Made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to item four, the discussion of and possible recommendations of the City Council for approval of proposed regulations for short-term rental registration. We got down to the meeting right quick, didn't we?
Right quick and hopefully it will go right quick.
I like the... I forgot what you call it, but...
The flow chart?
The flow chart. It only flows in one direction. Towards success.
Correct. Good evening Commissioner, so we have essentially taken all of the input that you provided over the last several meetings as well as input from legal, visiting, also regulations in other cities and attempted to mesh everything that was requested from a registration, what we're legally available to do or able to do as opposed to a permit, a registration process, but still putting in some safety checkpoints, I guess you can call them, for the residents who get notice, who have process in a violation and the registrant also has due process in their registration process. And so we tried to comb all of that together and we came up with what I think is a very good ordinance that addresses all of those things. It is from another city who shall remain unnamed at this point that has... It's been vetted through the courts in that city. That city is actually successful in this process and so I think we're at a point where we can hopefully move this forward. So I will just touch on how that registration process will work because it is something that we do have to keep track of. One of the things on the comments from the residents and the priors, we want to know who's next to us. And obviously when you're going to purchase or rent a house, you also want to know what's around you. And that's really what the registration will do is give us a snapshot of who's doing what, where. As I stated before, it's important for us from an emergency preparedness standpoint to know where those STRs are because they may not be familiar with our regulations on evacuation or how to get in contact with our police, et cetera. So one of the things that's provided in the registration process is a brochure, an application packet that says that these are all of the things you need to have handy. We'll go through a checklist with them, the fire extinguishers, the fire alarms, all of the things that get vetted through in the building code process as part of your normal single family. Internally, we've already created a registration area in our permitting software, my government online, so we will be able to track the registration date and the renewals and then we'll be able to provide a list on a monthly, annual, or even daily basis of council or the commission requests who's registered and where. The idea is as we take our GIS mapping up a level, you'll be able to pull it up on the map also to see where those are registered. We need to combine that with making sure that those match the hot reports, the hotel occupancy tax reports. And within the registration process, as you read in the regulations, that's one of the requirements, we have to know that they registered. We get into the violation point. So in the system, we're able to track quote-unquote violations. It starts as a complaint, it gets investigated. If it's something that comes out as a violation, it's a municipal court violation and those are the violations that count against non-renewal. A complaint does and a complaint has to get investigated, but it may not end up in a violation, so to speak. So we move on to renewal recommendation. It is provided by the police department because I want to know how many times we had to pay a visit. Maybe we have continued complaints about noise that we need some help from the owner to help us address. Perhaps it didn't quite end up in a violation because they were able to resolve it, but the complaints from the neighbors continue, so we'll work through that. And then an appeal, if they're denied, if that application is denied, that appeal is handled by Board of Adjustment. That's our...I don't have a Board of Appeals, so to speak, so Board of Adjustment is the board that goes to. And then if we decide non-renewals, we had talked about two years and more, that was rather stringent, so we took that to 12 months. And then any, as I stated, any continued violations are handled via municipal court. So...
One quick question.
Sure.
Just kidding you. At the end of the 12 months, is it automatic if they re-register or do we evaluate them? In other words, let's say somebody has five or six violations, then there's a 12-month period in which they are prohibited from coming back, right, on non-renewal. At the, let's say, month 13, they're back, do they simply have to re-register or do they have to show that they've cleaned their act up?
Well, all applications, all registration applications are reviewed and that was my point. So I'm going to look to the police chief to ensure that those violations, number one, were cured by municipal court and they're not outstanding anymore. And then what was that cure? If it is a...you know, I don't know whatever the cure the judge would have issued at that particular point in time, I want to make sure that all of that is taken care of before we go into...so no, it is not an automatic approval at that registration process.
Okay. And then in reading this, on the original proposed, or in the very back and those have been redlined.
Yes.
So am I to assume that everything before page seven is whole cloth new based on our conversations and based on what the last two pages have, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought.
There's some very minor, like number seven and number eight in the old ordinance proposal that made its way verbatim into the ordinance. If it sort of sounded like that except we wordsmithed it to flow better, I made comments such as number nine, this is rewarded in the new section under restrictions on short-term rentals, external signage.
Okay.
So I did catch some errors of myself. As I said, I caught Dallas County in here and historic zoning districts, which we don't have in our city, so I redlined those myself.
And you said this ordinance has been challenged and it has been upheld by the state district court?
Yes.
Has that, did that go to appeal to a circuit court?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay.
Not that I'm aware of. And this is a recent three-year. It's a, it happened within the last three years, so...
So is this established precedent?
Pretty recent.
Until it's appealed?
Well, we don't know when the, we don't know the city, so we don't know when it was appealed, when it was decided. We could be beyond the appeal period, in which case, you know, you're there. But generally district court is not citable like circuit courts of appeal are. I mean, you can, but it's weaker precedent. Bobby, have a comment on that or...
No.
Okay, so...
I have a question. May I?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
On the last page there, number six, weren't we saying all along that accessory structures, including a guest house, cannot be used as a short-term rental? That was scratched through and all of these other sentences and paragraphs that have been redlined will say something like this is reworded in the new section, blah, blah, blah. But there was nothing about that, so it makes me feel that that is no longer the case, that people can rent out accessory structures? Is that, I don't see it in any of the...
So if you look in the actual ordinance itself, at the top of page two, it says "short-term rental is defined as the rental of any residence or residential structure or a portion of a residence or residential structure for a period of 30 days." We went through some of that conversation with legal with accessory structures and what's a guest house and what isn't a guest house. Our current ordinance does not allow rental of your guest house. It does not. Legal has a little bit of an issue with that, but I am happy to strike that and have that conversation, have legal weigh in further. But I believe the gist of the conversation was you can't really prevent people from doing that on their property.
Well, I did read that top paragraph there and it defined the residence...
And I think our...
...accessory structures, it has to be your residence. So in a way that is, I thought that was what was the new wording there. But I'm afraid that some people that have accessory structures that are a trailer they brought in that has the restrooms and the kitchen and all that stuff, or they fixed up some place for a shop or studio that may also have some of those same things. And I just have a feeling of, I don't know who's going to say, "No, you can't do that" because it doesn't specifically say in here anymore like this number six did, you know? So we're saying that just...
So the gist of the...
Don't worry about it.
The gist of the guest house issue, as I understand it, going back and reading through, was Sunset Valley's desire to not have any multifamily, right? Once you have an additional dwelling unit on a property, you begin to have the discussion of single-family versus multifamily. That's normally cured in the building code with one meter, right? So it's one meter per property and it's sub-metered, so that doesn't really meet the definition of multifamily because it gets rounded in the building code. I know that we have sections in our code that allow, for example, your family to go stay at the back of the trailer for certain periods of time. We have folks living in their guest house renting out the primary house. So from a tracking perspective, I'm unsure as to my ability to go onto a piece of property and say, "Is that your parent or who is that on your, who is that in the trailer?" We have the right of entry as part of the building official. I'm just not sure. I don't think anybody in Sunset Valley has multiple meters on the property that would consider it a multifamily. But I understand your concern with the air streams that pop up and as we've seen on some of our streets already.
And make, I'm not sure it's clear, and it will or will not be permitted to have that used as a short-term rental.
In this ordinance, it will be permitted.
And how do you read that? Because I'm not sure I read it the same way.
The rental of any residence or residential structure.
Where are you?
It's at the very...
Short-term rental?
Mm-hmm. It's at the very top of page two.
I'm looking at down below, the following section, "no person, so thereafter advertised, blah, blah, blah," a residential property as a short-term rental, okay? Then it refers up to above.
Which one are you at, I'm sorry?
See, I get residence or residential structure because I go down farther than you define single-family residence to include the following, a one-family dwelling, a dwelling designed and constructed for occupancy, et cetera, et cetera. Nowhere do I see a trailer as tangible personal property if I recall correctly.
That, a trailer?
A trailer.
A trailer is tangible personal property unless it is affixed like a mobile home in which it is anchored, then it becomes realty. And yeah, for example, you can't get a, you can't get a homestead exception on an RV, but you could on a mobile home.
You can, but our building codes may violate it.
Correct.
And so therefore to put a, that type of dwelling...
You're talking about a mobile home type?
Mobile home type thing.
I'm sorry, the sun, right, is in right near us?
Would not be permissible. But the trailer is tangible personal property, I don't think it qualifies as a dwelling. So to address the specific of putting air streams, one or more, on your property for short-term rentals doesn't seem permissible.
It does, yeah.
Is that the way you read it?
That's the way I would read it.
Yes.
Because there's very, there's very clear definitions as to what a, what we now call manufactured housing.
Yes.
And then what is a recreational vehicle.
Yes.
And in the electric world, that becomes a real big distinction for sub-metering, electric sub-metering, and that's where I'm familiar with it.
They'll call it a travel trailer.
Like an RV or a fifth wheel or something like that as opposed to like a manufactured home. I don't think, neither one of them would meet the building codes.
That's the way I think too.
Right.
Now, one, one is excluded because it can't be a building on the residence. It doesn't qualify. So we don't have to worry about short-term rentals of manufactured housing, that's not going to happen. So the question is it being, if we are concerned about it and don't want to approve it, which I'm inclined, then the trailer is not permissible because I thought you had to have a dwelling.
So...
Single-family residence is defined below, but...
As a dwelling.
I don't disagree that the travel trailer or the airstream is not considered a permanent dwelling. That's not the one. But he also asked about folks that have guest houses. So in...
Guest houses I think do qualify.
That's my point.
Okay, that's the distinction. If you have, let's say, a detached garage that has some dwelling on the second floor or behind or adjacent to it, that is what I consider...
A residential structure, yes.
Yes, a residential structure that would qualify. And, you know, I mean, my attitude is I don't have a problem with that because you got limited based on the number of bedrooms, et cetera, you know, so...
All right, I've got what if, but go ahead.
Okay. Well, do you want, let's go with your what if and then I've got a question, a specific question on that point that was just raised.
Okay, on the corner pillow, there is a house with a swimming pool and a guest house and then a tiny house. Is the tiny house considered a trailer or is it built to standard building code and makes it a...
No, the tiny house is on a, it's on a skid. It is, well, I call it a skid. It's on a...
That's right.
Mid-escape, somewhere around here. It's on a... It's not a trailer, but it's a...
A chassis, a frame.
It is on a trailer.
It's on, well, yeah, it's on...
It's on wheels, yeah.
So that's the same as a...
Manufactured house?
Yes, that is not...
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm pulling up our land development code because there's a conflict in our code with accessory structure and guest house that, it sounds like I think what John is getting at.
So in that case, a guest house is rentable short-term?
So I...
I don't know.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, I don't know if that means that the small house, whatever they call those, that are on, whatever we call that, that seems to be movable, it can be picked up and moved.
Right.
Would not qualify.
That's what she's saying, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And my question is, okay, so on Lone Oak, there is a house with several different buildings behind it. One of them's like a theater thing, but another one has a bathroom, a kitchen, a bedroom. It's a, you know, can be a dwelling, if you will, right? In which case you've got two dwelling units on the same property, on the same tract, right? There's no question that it's not a, it's not a trailer, it's a second, it's a second house. Single-family dwelling detached is a dwelling designed and constructed for occupancy by one family and located on a lot or separate building tract and having no physical connection to the building located on any other lot or tract. A separate building tract, I don't think that would qualify because you've got house number one and on the same tract, house number two. I would argue that under the separate building tract, now you can have an owner that has multiple pieces of land and on each building tract has a house. So if they bought Mr. Lee's house next door and my house, they could rent both of them side by side, but they can't build a second house behind my house and then rent my house to group A, the house behind my house to group B because it's the same tract of land. That's the way I'm reading that restriction. I don't know if that goes to what you were addressing, but it's another wrinkle. And part of this is that it's a little poorly written in that we have residence or residential structure, but there's no definition of residence or residential structure, just a definition of single-family residence. Meanwhile, over in the definition section on STR, on, you know, at the beginning, is primary residence, but we have no, it's not used where we can talk about this. So the definitions don't match. We need to have consistent definitions throughout. And if there's a term used in one part of the ordinance, it needs to be the same throughout and if the definition is not defined, it needs to be defined. It's pretty simple. You do all your definitions and then you use the definitions. And what's causing us problems is that we're having disagreements amongst us all because the definitions aren't there.
I thought we were so close.
We were close. We are close.
I just know that we, you know, this whole business of the access, not being able to rent accessory structures come up before us in some of these previous meetings and even with residents. And then all of a sudden I see it just redlined through and I thought, "What?" So I think we do need to...
But again, it's not just accessory structures. What are we doing about the second house?
Right.
Is that one meter?
So in the building code, multifamily and single-family is usually one meter. That's why you don't give a second sub-meter because you will end up with multiple, you essentially create a multiple family. I think the definition that John's talking about is a single, a single guest house shall not pay rent or other compensation for the use of the guest house. That's the conflict with short-term rentals and with this.
See, but it's not, that term's not defined in here or used in here, is it?
No.
That's a gap.
No. And really because in my mind that's still a residential structure. The guest house is a residential structure. It's not called out as that residential structure including a guest house or I guess in the definition would...
So what do we do about the separate tract?
I didn't understand your comment about the separate tract.
Look at the definition.
May I?
Yes.
I lead it a little differently.
Okay.
Because it says located on a lot. And then it says or a separate building tract. It's not a separate lot or a separate tract. So if, and I put that in with one and two because it makes no sense otherwise. And that is, the way I look at it is, is you have a one-family dwelling detached, so therefore that dwelling would be, let's say, the guest house.
Okay.
And that can be on a lot.
Okay.
Has to be, obviously. But then that is one type of a single-family residence. The single-family residence, of course this needs a little wordsmithing, means a single-family residence. Isn't that redundant? So maybe what really needs to be said is that short-term rental is a rental of a residence or residential structure. A residential structure means a single-family residence with the following criteria. I'm getting, that gets me closer to accomplishing the objective of it has to be a dwelling, which to me a dwelling is permanent structure, not something that's removable.
With a bathroom, a kitchen, and sleeping.
Because that's what's taken for occupancy by one family.
Right.
One family can be me, which is okay. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
So I find that it's, why we have to have a one-family dwelling which is either abutting, separate wall, all this kind of stuff, doesn't much matter to me. To me, it just adds it in that it nicely states that it doesn't have to be attached. So it accomplishes my objective of saying the dwelling, the unit that's rented, can be rented, must be a permanently affixed dwelling with the requirements of a residence, bathroom, blah, 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 versus a converted garage that you have to walk to another facility, et cetera.
An RV with a cassette toilet that you have to go dump every now and then.
That does not qualify because it's not a dwelling that's attached.
Correct, yeah.
So therefore, I don't know if that takes care of your issue because the issue you started with was is the, you know, the airstream parked in there for over the weekend, plug it in and I'm renting this thing out during the great events that we have here in Austin.
Not just the, not just that, because that can be moved. In our first talk about this, it was even a permanent second accessory that just happened to have these facilities that now makes it livable, a livable dwelling with bathrooms and whatever. That second, it could be a tiny house, it could be somebody's, I don't know, just building that they brought in and added the plumbing and stuff or whatever, but as long as it has those water and, of course, then you go to the electrical box and that. That's what to me throws that off as being a dwelling. Because to me, a separate dwelling would have to have its own...
Well, then that then is a question for, and I'll come to you staff in just a second, but coming back to the conversation we're having, I think at a very minimum, we have all been on zoning for five-plus years, I think all of us, and some of us for much longer.
Even us.
Some of, even us, right. Some of us have been practicing law for 20-plus, 25 years, if not 30 or more, and we're having disagreements about the language. A layperson reading our ordinances has no hope if we can't figure it out. So I'm thinking at the very minimum, it needs to be straightened out so that it's legible. Okay, so that, so...
You know what, I think we just allow rentals, period. That's, you know, the state legislature's going to say best use thing that they always do about your property. And if it, if it has these, if it qualifies as a living residence, whatever it is, whether it's an RV or an accessory building, just to keep away from all this conflict and confusion... just to keep away from all this conflict and, and confusion, just leave that red line right through that old thing and let people rent anything that they have, as long as it's usable.
Well, then that, that raises my question with staff. When you said meter, are you referring to water meter or electric meter? An EZID issued by ERCA or a meter issued by the city for purposes of water?
Electrical.
You're on.
I, I mean, electrical because we have, uh, multiple meters. We have sub-meters for irrigation and those kinds of things, so that, that's not the one. Electric, once, as you're probably all aware in construction, once that temporary construction loop goes up, Katie bar the door, it's very hard for me to pull anything back. So that ESID number also becomes the location grid that feeds off of everything else. That's why it's always counted in the building world as the meter, as a multiple electric meter.
Yeah, so we're going by EZIIDs and I'm not sure that a second house would have one.
It would not.
It would not.
This is short-term rental. They don't need it.
Yeah. Yeah, we, yeah, we go with what John's going with.
Well, I think John is going farther than I'm interested in going. And that is, he seems to indicate that the, the airstream is okay. Let them rent what they want. And I'm just not interested in having my neighborhood have airstreams and it can be multiple ones.
That's kind of being done now.
Well, from, from a staffing perspective, I don't think we're interested in airstreams either. I, just the tip of that iceberg is the environmental and having to pump things out, making sure that they pump to things out, things aren't spilling onto the ground. That's just the tip of the iceberg of those.
I, I'll take that back then. I always thought that, uh, that not being able to rent those out was, was an okay thing, but it's, there's so many, um, places that I, I know personally where people are living in, maybe some of them are, are relatives, and that was another thing we put in there. Like, you can't have another, anybody else living on your property in a separate dwelling unless it's, uh, unless they're related to you. Well, that, that has, people have kind of slid under that one too.
There's a lot of cousins.
I know.
Living in Sunset Valley. And I, I don't know.
Yeah, defining family in the court system is a tough.
So the house next to you, uh, we're calling that a guest house now?
On either side is single-family housing. I mean, I don't understand what your question, my, I don't have any, I mean, they're just, single-family, single-family, and I'm in between.
Well, I'm, I'm Lone Oak.
Oh, the one on Lone Oak, the one over here.
We, we do have a property that, there is a loophole in our code under the accessory, um, structure impervious cover area. And it says you're allowed three structures, so long as they don't exceed fifteen hundred. One can't exceed more than a thousand. And so, you know, that, and then if it's up off the ground and it, you know, lets water through, then it maybe doesn't count. I mean, that, those are things that we're tidying up in the land development code, but that's a, um, that's one you can drive through and you can see it on Lone Oak. So probably one of the, um, the things that needs to be written in here, and I made a note, was that it, it needs to be a, a permanent structure. It's not something that's on a chassis or-
Are those not permanent structures?
It is a permanent structure, the one that I'm thinking of.
Yeah.
And I don't, I don't mind, it's just I want to be able to be, you know, for someone to know where we stand on this.
Well, and the other thing too, most communities, most jurisdictions have a requirement for registration of those type of, um, the trailer at least, that it's registered, it's movable. I mean, you have some communities who take it a step further in mobile homes and say, your mobile home that you move into our community can't be more than ten years old. So, I mean, I don't know that we're going to take it that far, but it is something to consider, especially when we keep talking about impervious cover and protecting the aquifer and all of our codes are supposed to be to protect. How do we know what they're dumping? How do we know when they're pumping? How, you know?
I, I don't think you have any argument with, with trailers. The, the, the problem we're talking about is that, um, if, if we let that go unregulated, then there are many houses in the city that, in, in, in Old Town, I guess, have larger lots that would allow for, uh, three structures or, or just one extra structure under the impervious cover. And then you, and as long as you build it on one meter, you've got your, you've got yourself a rental. That, I mean, are we encouraging that by what we're doing here or are we?
Well, I think what's already been done is, kind of has to be grandfathered in, doesn't it?
I think it was not legally.
I'm, I'm saying, after we pass this, it, it allows for a second structure rentable.
Well, I think earlier you said that a, a guest house is rentable. I mean, we can't.
We have it here, under the current code, a single-
Guest house is not supposed to be rented, is not supposed to be rented.
I thought that I heard that the STR could be, it could be used for an STR.
Yes, well, it, it's in conflict with the current STR that's proposed in front of you. And that's, I have the attorney chiming in and says, uh, for, the guest, my question was, can we force the guest house to not be rented? And she said, eh, that sort of gets into single-family residential aspect, which was back to our conversation initially, we probably can't force that, which is why it was left in. But, um, that's a conversation you guys in the council need to wrestle with. Personally, rents are very high, um, property taxes are very high. We have, I already have two Sunset Valley residents, current residents who live here, who've been here for a while, asking about this and asking, can I rent that apartment over my garage now? Or, you know, I'm looking to create an art studio over my garage, but am I going to be able to rent it?
Well, my answer to that is, is you could put in an exception in this, just simply except for short-term rentals. Because you go back to that example you just had, and we are not permitting rentals even long-term over the garage-type mechanism. But if it's a short-term rental, which is what somebody, your example of, I want my art studio and then certain weekends I can rent it out, as long as it qualifies as a single-family residence, which has all the requirements we've discussed. Again, I'm not sure I see much problem with that because if it's a guest house, your guests, without charging them, could live there forever practically. Am I wrong in that one?
Says you can't pay rent, but it, that doesn't mean you can't have someone live there.
The father-in-law house or, in my situation, the dog house. But that, but that's what a guest house is for. You don't, they could be there all winter. Which, you know, if the structure's there and it's a dwelling and it qualifies, they were able to use it before. They just couldn't rent it out. Because that makes it a multi-family location. Correct?
Yeah.
So I think that is more there for the, for the fact that it still qualifies as single-family residence versus once you allow long-term rentals, it is no longer a single-family residence.
I guess so.
Our exception would be only for short-term rentals. Which, I thought that's where we were kind of making okay.
Right, and, and I, I agree that we should, you know, if we want to do this, let's do it in the current land development code, as well as the ordinance we're considering, which is what Sylvia's doing. She's putting it into this ordinance. Question, can we touch the other part of the code because it's not been noticed?
You, you-
You cannot, but when we bring it forward to council, we can notice it, that that part of the code needs to be amended to match this one.
Okay. So whoever makes a motion on this has to keep that in mind.
Uh, human habitation by a reasonable number of persons.
What, what we have, um, and we, we, we kind of went round and round on this. This is not a reasonable number of person. There is a property code that limits the number of people in bedrooms and, and it, it prevents, you know, unreasonable landlords from trying to fit twenty people into a home, um, by, um, human.
You can't put the entirety of sigma, delta, kappa, phi into one house.
Um, let me, we have-
And if, and if that is actually a fraternity, my apologies, I was just trying to pick, you know, any random letters.
Any random number.
I mean, it, it really ought to match up with what's in the rest of the, one, oh, what is it, one bedroom plus three people or something like that?
What is that?
I don't, I don't recall.
Per bedroom.
It's in here. That's your limit of, uh, guests that you can have. It's the short-term rental. It's limited three times the number of bedrooms that you have.
Yeah.
Three times, yeah.
So three people.
Three people.
One bedroom is three people.
Yes.
So we're going to have to go through and detail which definitions are not in there yet.
Well, I guess we should get the attorney to look at this and what's, what's, uh, been decided in other cities, you know? Surely it's been coming up. And like, uh, Sylvia was saying, there are people with, with the high costs of, of everything right now and the, and the taxes and whatnot, I can see why people would want to get a little extra money coming in, you know? So it's got a, I know, I think the city of Boston's been a bit more open to multiple people living in, you know, in garage apartments, they still have those all over Austin. Well, um-
And, and the attorneys have been going to tell me where to slide in except for short-term rentals on this guest house definition.
No, because that's not where the problem is. The problem is in the provision that allow, that does not allow guest houses to be rented.
Oh, that, okay.
Yeah, and we can't touch that. That's got to go to, that's, that's got to go to council. That's, yeah.
I don't think we need that there. To me, it's in this definition of, um, residence or residential structure.
Yeah.
As to what is rentable as a short-term rental. And it seems fairly simple that it, to me, it's rentable if it's a dwelling that can be used as a resident, I mean, it has to qualify as a residence, whether you have two residents on there, one being the principal residence, the other is a guest house. As long as it has the requirements of a single-family residence on it. Single-family dwelling. This seems to be okay, because, I mean, I'd sit there and go, residential structure means any single-family residence referred to, which includes the following. One-family dwelling attached and detached. I suppose somebody can have a guest house that is technically attached. Which again, I don't know if I care. The idea is, is you don't have non-permanent structures, i.e. the airstream that's being pulled out of the property, utilized for a short term and taken away. And the airstream can be there and can be used, but it just can't be rented.
Right.
That's what people do now, is it not?
Yes, in fact, there was, uh, there was a family that I know that when they were doing, they were having a floor renovation. So they moved in, they moved into the airst, they moved into an airstream while the bedroom floors were completely ripped up and redone and all that, and then they moved back to the house. It was they, that was they themselves that did move in.
Yeah, and a tornado comes through and we need to have, whatever. I mean, I don't think we can do it in my neighborhood because HOA says no. But that's different.
That's a different, that's a-
That's not, that's not our problem here. Ours is addressing this.
Also, we don't have condominiums or apartments, so why do we even need those in there? This is just adding to the whole confusion. I think just simplify it and call it a, these are, these are, uh, short-term rentals in a single-family residential neighborhood, period, right?
Yeah, we don't have two, we don't have two dwelling, two family dwellings either.
He proposes to strike those.
I, I removed even one family attached because we don't have any townhomes here.
Yeah, I mean, I think we just simplify the whole thing and just identify what is, uh, what we can and can't do, so that people understand right off the bat if they, if they, you know, read all this. Because the, the people that are, want to do, the rentals are going to be reading this document, right? So let's make them, let's make it as clear as possible by eliminating whatever we can and simplifying things.
I agree. I just want to comment that I don't have any problem with one or two. You can delete the other three.
Three, four, and five?
Yeah, and the other thing might be to sit there and say, single-family residence in, um, just below that. See, the definition of single-family residence, would you change that to residential structure? No, the definition is- See, you start off right there, you might stop. Short-term rental defines the rental of any residence or residential structure. We don't use those terms below. What we use is single-family residence means. And I think you're trying to say, a residential structure means a single-family residence as follows.
Okay, so strike into the line of that.
Strike all-
No, 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 you're missing, leave, just, don't strike anything. Short-term rental needs to be defined, the rental of a residence. Alls I'm asking is, down below, you see, single-family residence in italics. That should be changed to, a residential structure means a single-family residence.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
That's what I think. Then it ties in, a short-term rental is defined, the rental of any residence or residential structure. And so therefore, a residential structure should be in italics. Means a single-family residence, which has the following, designed for occupancy of one family, et cetera. And so it can either be attached or detached. That's why I leave one and two in.
Right. I agree with that change because it does tie the two definition sections together. We're using a uniform nomenclature.
So item number two is a specific definition of a townhome from the building code. We don't have townhomes in our-
I understand that, but that doesn't mean that, see, you have a one-family detached in parentheses. Okay, it doesn't have to be detached. You can have a separate walled-off unit. That's the only reason why I'm leaving it in, because then you make it clear that it has to be a single-family residence as a part of the short-term rental situation. You can't rent out, like I say, the attached garage area that could be walled off in a manner to say, here's your short-term rental location, when it doesn't have all the requisites- that could be walled off in a manner to say, here's your short-term rental location, when it doesn't have all the requisites that is needed in a single-family residence. If you're gonna rent it out, it either has to be a separate building with all the requisites, or you have a attached portion, but it has to have a separate, the separate requirements of a single-family residence.
And the requirements for a single-family residence, where are those listed? I mean, I know, I know what they are, I just don't remember where we have those.
So, so I'm a little bit confused on number two, so I understand what you're saying, a one-family dwelling that's has, let's say, the garage is attached and they put the, they put the apartment over the garage, and so that is an attached, single-family dwelling. This, and is located on a platted, separate lot, is because townhomes have that shared wall, but they're on two separate lots.
You can delete, delete that.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, is this, so where are the single-family residence requirements, like, where, it requires a living, kitchen, bathroom?
Those are in the building code.
But, but we do have those delineated somewhere.
Yes, yes, you know, the bedrooms have to have a closet and.
Okay. Just, just making sure that we've got that covered somewhere.
Can't just have a toilet and a sink, it has to actually have a shower or a bathtub.
There are requirements in the building code, I mean, they're microscopic, so to speak, it's gotta have. Yes, it's gotta have certain things, but a bedroom classified in the code has to have a closet, a door, a window. So, those things are addressed in a different section, they're not addressed in this. When we are looking at a review of a home that has a, a space that's undefined and they wanna use it as a bedroom, if it doesn't have the general criteria of what a bedroom is in the building code, it can't qualify as a bedroom per se.
What is short-term rental, one, two?
Bed and breakfasts are excluded explicitly. And again, we, we can't touch at this point. So, our recommendation would be, if we do anything tonight, it would be, you know, here's what we recommend to council, with the recommendation that council make the appropriate changes to the land development notice, provide notice and make the changes to the land development code as needed to make it uniform with this.
And, and I do think we are, that, that this proposed ordinance will live within the LDC, so actually, we will have to post a public hearing notice, and you guys will have to see it again, but we can, that gives us time to incorporate all the changes we do tonight, we can, we can, you know.
Yeah.
Put it where it needs to go in the code, so you'll have a nice, clean version, and that will be the public hearing for the next meeting, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry to raise the notice issue.
No, that's, it's, I had to go back and check, but yeah, both, both you all and the council have to be noticed before any changes to the code are made.
I'm sorry, I brought the whole thing up.
Well, now that we're finished with the first paragraph.
And probably for, I mean, this is, I guess, for, for you all and for us, would we want, I mean, the way that this reads is it has the definitions up front, but in our code, the definitions are in this, you know, would we want the definitions, oh, it's gone? You know, in that chap, in that first section of the code?
I.
To be consistent, or do you want the definitions specific to this ordinance listed?
I, I prefer the way the state does its, its administrative code, the, the regulations of a state agency, where there's general definitions up front, but then in each sub-chapter dealing with a specific issue, there's specific definitions that, for that sub-chapter.
So, it would make sense for SDR to be in this, in this sub-chapter.
For, for purposes of SDR, these are the, these terms are defined as, and.
But, but we'll make any other amendments as we've discussed tonight, so like the, the guesthouse section to say.
With the exception of an SDR.
With the exception of an SDR.
That is correct, sir. You know, and the, the other thing is, I, I was thinking that it was a little too persnickety to ask for a sketch of a floor plan. However, coming back to what John was saying, you know, where it's, a bathroom has to have a shower and/or tub, right? A method of bathing under the building code? Then we would need to see, like, when LoanNote registers, if that second house, does it have a sink and a toilet? Or does it have a sink, a toilet, and a shower? And that would make the distinction between whether it's a dwelling unit or not.
Because for dozen, it's, it's considered just a guest bath, a guest restroom, bathroom.
So, I was thinking of taking five out, to tell you the truth, but now I see the utility in it.
Well, it's not even from a persnickety, if we are in a situation where we have South by Southwest, a home has been rented, their occupant, fire has to come show up, or EMS has to come show up, we'd like to know what's the quickest means of entry and the safest way to get people out.
At one time, we were talking about having a responsible party being within 30 minutes of a call, and, and now it seems like it's a 24-hour, they have to be available 24 hours, it doesn't say anything about how soon they have to be there, is that?
I, I must have just missed that, but the intent was, yes, they do have to be, I need to be able to get ahold of them at any time, and yes, we talked about they needed to be available within a certain distance, and what section is that?
I think there was a distance.
Or a time to get here. Where is it?
On page, on page one, it, it defines local emergency contact, it says, who resides within 20 miles of the subject property, act as owner's authorized agent, and be reachable on a 24-hour basis. But, do we wanna put a time, I know earlier iterations of this had, what did we say, 30, 30 minutes or? This says 20 mile, I mean, theoretically, if you're available 24 hours and you're within 20 miles, unless it's at five.
Yeah, you could, you could call them up and they'd say, I'll be there when I get there.
You're right, maybe we should put a time?
You know, I, I don't know, the house is burning, do you, do you really wanna wait, or, you know, I don't know.
Well, it's, it's, in a situation like that, it's, it's a little different, I think it would be like, the floodwaters are coming, and we have some issue, you know, we need you to resolve. Because if the house is burning, AFD is gonna show up and put out the fire, before these guys ever arrive.
Right, okay.
But it's something that they need to handle, broken windows, you know, something like that. I don't, I don't, I don't have a strong preference, I just wanted to point it out that.
You, but you can't put anything like a reasonable amount of time, because everybody's reasonable is, you know, I, I can see you calling somebody at 2:00 in the morning and, and they're disinterested in coming out in the rain to, in any.
I mean, this, and this, by the definition, it says, be reachable on a 24-hour basis, have access to the property, and be authorized to act to address any complaints, disturbances, and emergencies.
So, my, my thought on that is, if we are having an emergency, do we want them in the way? That's the first thing. But, second thing, if it is something like a, a window has broken out or something like that, they're, they're probably not gonna end up showing up to do the duct tape on the window themselves. PD will probably safely secure the structure, and more than likely, if it's not a safe structure, we're gonna have people go somewhere else and not stay the night, so. And then what happens if they don't show up? I mean, that's gonna count as a, when we're reviewing, we're gonna say, well, you know, when we have problems, you don't ever show up. So, you're not really being a responsible tenant or owner.
All right, I just thought I'd bring it up for a discussion.
Okay, well, I have another one.
You have another one?
Yes.
You're not gonna regret this one, are you, John?
I don't think so.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm going now down to, on that redlined page to number 12. Where it says, maximum rental period should be 30 consecutive nights.
Wait, what page?
Number 12, on the, the one that's, has all the redlining.
Page, page six of the packet, no, I'm sorry, page eight of the packet.
It's the redline.
Yep.
Just below the infamous number six. Where it says, maximum rental period should be 30 consecutive nights, and it says, this is reworded in the new section, which I did not see it reworded in any way.
It's in the definition, it's in the, it's in the very first section of purpose and applicability, where it says that, because that's, for hotel taxes, it is a rental period of 30 days or less, so that aligns with the state definition. So, that's in the first section of purpose and applicability at the end of the paragraph.
Okay, then.
And then also on page two, at the top, for the, the, again, we're back with the definitions, the rental of any residence or residential structure for a period of less than 30 days. Because anything beyond that is beyond what you can charge a hotel tax for, which is then, takes it out of a short-term rental, into a long-term rental.
So, that's what confused me then, because it said it was in restrictions on short-term rentals. And when I went there, I didn't see anything about 30 days, okay. All right, well, that was easy.
I did chime in, and she said, under the Zatari case, we cannot exclude guesthouses.
We cannot exclude what?
We cannot exclude the guesthouse rental.
We weren't planning on it.
No, no, I, I, but I asked her the question during the discussion, and she just chimed in.
Okay, so, so she's, we, we, we. Yeah, okay, we came up to the right answer before she answered, okay, okay.
Yes, sir.
Well, it's good, good to know that we have confirmation from our council.
I have a few nits, if you don't mind, I can't hold back.
Pick, pick one at a time.
I will go to page three of seven. At the very top, there's number seven, a property owner must submit a, submit complete list of all rentals advertised on all hosting sites. I don't mean to be too nitpicky, but you can advertise on other things other than websites. And so, I just feel like saying, any medium used to advertise the short-term rental intended to be or otherwise a complete list of all media or intended media, that would include newspapers. Who knows where the future's gonna go with newspapers.
Well, that one kinda bothered, that one kinda bothered me too, because I thought it was talking about something that's kinda like none of our business, that they have other rentals that are advertising on some site for a rental in Dallas or wherever. You're supposed to notify us of that? This is a complete list of all rentals advertised?
Pardon?
It, we're adding, it should say, within the city. Yeah, because you're right, John, we don't, we're not looking to, to regulate outside of jurisdiction.
And, and see, and I, I took that as being, at the very beginning, the introductory A says, you shall not do this for a property within the city, and then, you know, but we can add that, I have no objection. Again, if we're disagreeing, that means there's potential for con, for, for misunderstanding somewhere.
I have another one.
Here's the chair.
Shoot. In number 10 below, my colleague may enjoy this one, names and addresses of all registered agents, should parties be named and their subject be corporations. I believe the intent should be filing entities under the Texas Business Organization Code. Limited liability companies.
Partnerships, certain partnerships, yeah.
Filing entities.
Filing entities.
Proper term.
Instead of registered agents?
No, instead of corporations.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
Because you can have other business organizations that are not corporations that are still.
That are required to have a registered agent?
Yes.
Want the real big knit now? Says, the one above is nine, trade names, comma, if any.
Trade name, comma, if what?
If any.
Yeah, they may not have one. I guess trade name is a common enough term.
Having changed my title to a vehicle, I had to fill out an equivalent of assumed name. My name is Robert Emmett Reitz, and Robert Reitz, they're both, so, anyway.
Or a car title.
Yes. I'm wanting the same.
You got any other nits?
I wanna draw attention to page four, at the top, number seven. To fail to include a written prohibition against the use of a short-term rental for having a party, is that sufficiently defined? You're prohibiting a party? Maybe it's fine?
Are, are you trying to define party? What is a party?
I'm asking the question, because I have no proposed change.
Unfortunately, with the deterioration of the English language, so that party is now a verb, as opposed to a noun. I'm going, I'm gonna party on Friday night, uh, no. I, I think even then, with, with the deterioration of the English language, people understand what a party is, I, I would, I would think so. And we would leave it in the police officer's discretion, if, if they think it's a party, it's a party.
Well, I think this has to do with advertising, and it's no, it's prohibited, so, we'll leave it, I think it's okay, but I thought I'd bring it up in case anybody else was worried about it.
A, a gathering in which there is music and frivolity, if we wanted, you know, how are we gonna define it?
No alcohol in it?
Well, I think it's, are we talking about, let's say, somebody wanted to have a, some kind of a gathering for, sort of, he was running for office, let's say, and invite just tons of people in there for this, is that a party? So, are we trying to say you can't do that either?
Short-term rental.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's not.
I thought that's what they were alluding to.
Yeah, so in almost every Airbnb, rented my fair share, you know, you, you know, it says, you, you may not use this to have a party, you know.
And, and everybody's good with that, I mean, that's okay.
Yeah, I mean, that, well, that's, yeah, again, that's, that's not the, you know, it's, this is, we are not, we are not registering residents to have a event venue. We're registering them to have a short-term.
I believe it may, I brought it up, maybe I shouldn't have, but it, it provides sufficient notice that they're not, to allow a party at the place.
I think if we just, I think if we just say, you can't, you know, in your, in your advertisements, you have to say, no parties.
Yes.
And then, because if we, if we list what exactly a party is, some clever kid at, you know, Gamma Delta Iota is gonna say, well, if we don't do this, and don't do this, and don't do this, we can have this, and this, and this. So, if we just say a party, let's let common sense prevail, I hope. So, if we just say a party, let's let common sense prevail, I hope.
I have no further comments.
Have you had anybody in the, in the Police Department look at this as, you know, for their part of it, to see if they have any problem with it?
Yeah, Chief has, Chief has reviewed, Chief has been keeping aware of all of our discussions, and he, he hasn't really given me any comments.
He hasn't asked for any new ordinances.
No.
He hasn't asked for anything new to enforce.
They got enough to deal with, they don't need a new one? Are we square on what definitions you want? I'm looking at you, man, Rodrigo, you're Rodrigo, right?
If I need an R, yes. No, I think we made changes on the fly. So, I'm not making this motion, I would, I was just gonna say, it would be acceptable, I believe, for the staff and for us, should be acceptable for somebody to say, I move for recommendation to council, consistent with the discussion we've had this evening, as reflected in the redlines done by staff this, you know, tonight, and with the warning to council that they may have to go change the definitions of the Land Development Code later. You know, so a motion like that should work, I'm looking at the staff to verify.
Well, I thought that, what Matt said earlier, he preferred to clean it up and then have a public hearing.
Well, no, I mean, yes, but for tonight, we move forward.
Well, yeah, and I guess there's two, you know, we could, because we are trying to let council look at the, you know, we could let council look at this, maybe get comments, and then have the official public hearing, where you will have the clean, you know, how it's gonna look within the LDC. And/or we could try to schedule, our next agenda item is actually about scheduling and calling the next meeting, so.
So, you're trying to schedule a joint meeting?
We, we don't have to.
You're going to have plenty of joint meetings as the Land Development Code comes forward. I want to give you some rest.
Yeah, so our next...
Thanks for the warning.
I guess we can go ahead and talk about that now, since it's relevant, but the next regularly scheduled meeting of the commission would be Wednesday, April 27. And so, on our plate, we have this, these, the actual ordinance, right? The ordinance that will amend the Land Development Code to include the short-term rental cleaned-up version, and also amending that guesthouse stipulation. We will also have city-owned property zoning changes, and so that's a public hearing. The Galt property and the Barron's property.
And the Wood property?
The Barron's, the Milton Barron's property, 6107 Brody, that was just recently purchased. Yes, and is there one more thing for zoning, or no, is that it? I feel like there was one additional item, but yeah, so, so, you know, there's an option for, oh, yeah, that's right. And the, that's right, I knew there was one more thing. So, and additionally, the Planning Environmental Committee has been reviewing the comprehensive plan, and they're ready to move forward with presenting it to council for adoption of a revised comp plan. But according to state law, you guys have to review that as well. So, it will be noticed, as like everything else, and there'll be kind of a 30-day period for review, for public review and comment, and that will include you all having a bite of, bite of the apple to make any comments or recommendations before it's finally adopted.
Us having a meeting specifically to look that over?
Yeah, I mean, it can be, that can be one agenda item, is yes, and we would give it to you, you know, beforehand to review and make any comments before it's finally adopted by council. So, I know in the past, the last time the city initiated zoning change related to city facilities, they held a joint meeting. I believe that was 2016. We were thinking having the city property zoning changes at the April 27 regular meeting, and then council would take action at the May 3 meeting. So, I guess that's the first question, is everyone available for Wednesday, April 27 at 6:00 P.M.?
I'm not sure.
I put it on my calendar.
That's three days before Art Fest, but that's a busy time.
Yep.
And it's a heavy agenda, John.
But we don't have to finish them all that evening?
No.
Okay.
April 27.
27.
It's fine.
Okay, so...
If I can't have Russell here, Russell, are you good for that night? 27?
I think I'm okay. I do have, I got a response to a motion for summary judgment that's due right before then, so unless something bad happens and I wind up, you know...
Russell might be needed, huh?
Yeah, but I think I should be done and free, unless there's a procedural mess-up somewhere along the way.
So, basically, you had a motion on the floor, did you not?
No, I was saying that that would be the motion if somebody wanted to make a motion.
I'm just curious, are you prohibited from making the motion, or you'd prefer somebody else make it?
No, I just, I don't think we... I don't think we need a motion, it's staff direction, because we're gonna come back anyway. So, the staff is directed to make the changes consistent with tonight's discussion. That would be my, that would be my motion, if I'm gonna make a motion.
I think they've already done it.
I think so, too. They're fast.
So, do we have, point of order, do we have to do anything after that? I mean, do we have to make a motion to send this to city council as recommendation?
We will at the next meeting.
At the 27th meeting.
Yes.
Yes, but because it's, all lives within the Land Development Code zoning section, there has to be properly noticed with the public hearing.
Okay.
But hopefully, that will be a concise public hearing, since we've been talking about this for months, so, yeah. And then you can make your formal recommendation to council to approve the ordinance.
Okay, so we moved on from item four to item five, and we completed item five. So, that leaves us with item six.
Move to adjourn?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.
We are done. You know, I just noticed that last month, according to meeting, Commissioner Boozer also seconded the motion to adjourn after Commissioner Reitz made the motion, so...
Always perk up.
Though you, those, you guys are a voting block when it comes to adjournment.
It's duly noted that somebody has legal capa...